Regular meeting of the County Executive Council by tall reporters. Let's all please. So the first item on the agenda is opening exercises.
A prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon us this spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that will steadfastly propose a purpose that we may faithfully serve in our offices to promote the will of being involved people. We ask this in your name, amen.
Would you stick the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. So no one has signed up for public comment. So we go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? The second. Want to pay or say aye?
Aye.
Foes? Step passes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and approve $2,000 for landscaping in Jamestown Arts and Cultural Center for a new business request for approval.
Is there any objection? There are none, so we'll consider that as the last item. Right, next, we go to information reports, our finance report.
All right, I want to say it's pretty polar for the end of the year. As you see, the revenue looks pretty good and actually is pretty good. The originally invested 330,000 was a grant, which that's even without that. We currently have about 90% and expect more to come in. Go to public works under projects. Of 15,000 about the both for all with is Charleston County. 11,000 is for survey work of Bradford and 5,000 is in the capital county. When I add that undergrounds keeping almost 23,000 of that is for the arbers throughout the year. Under parks and recreation, under special events, $1,000 was for the shredding event. Under facilities and equipment, under facility maintenance, $2,200 was for wiring at the park. Under capital project, let's see. Under the Ocean View, St. Louis Range, that is the Thomas and Putnam and the last end of time easement. Under the hack of innovation, which should be the last payment, and we do expect to get reimbursement. I just don't have a final now. Under drainage improvement project, that's the last payment for Scooter. And under under property housing, under general on community events, that is that is a final payment, but we will be reimbursed for first time per contribution, $55,000.
So any questions for the finance department?
Yeah, this is kind of a general, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. First of all, good job finding all that extra money. That's great. That's very good. I was wondering, Jamestown Creek really does seem to be like one of our community organizations. I was just wondering, maybe that could be put into the category with some of our other community service types of features. You know, Jamestown Creek goes out and picks up litter and we do a lot of other things. Helping hands is certainly a service aspect of that. And I was hoping that maybe we could include it under community services, since it is a community service, rather than having it be a separate entity. I know it's a new fiscal year, maybe try to do that.
I feel like it was like that at one time and we moved it out because it was so much in and out in that particular, trying to keep track of it.
And if you look in the budget, it is in the community.
Right.
But I think we had just pulled it out of the budget report because there's
There was some stuff in there, yeah.
And the other one, more activity.
So everybody knows that it's a community.
Yeah, it was.
All right, very good.
Any other questions? There are none, thank you, Meryl. It's now over to the administrative report.
Okay, doing a lot of grant work right now, quarterly reports and things of that nature. There's two grants we're working on with level partners. You all got approved them, working on some back in December and now that we have a nonprofit setup. There's a couple we're running in on, the Choice Foundation and the National Democratic Humanities. Would be some good opportunities. Plus they are on her, already been here, Mark, with Meryl and giving her a lot of credit. She has made her job a lot easier, a lot of the invoices and COs and backup for everything. It's written stand-in and footbooks. So they're really able to do a lot of homework remotely, which is wonderful. They will be back the week of September the 13th. We had a new plan for Jamestown Nutrition, a new business here in the town that went really well. We had several members of the Recap Poly Road Committee come out to that as well. Francis has completed our annual risk and safety audit with the municipal association. Did a great job of that, had a wonderful audit, thank you Francis. And she's working updating our town personnel policy. We have an end of government meeting scheduled for next week, on Saturday, 7:21, 7:00 PM. That agenda went all out to you all today and will advertise to the public tomorrow with next week's weekly meeting. Staff is working through the annual department report. Should that, should have that presented to you all next month or in September. And not on here, but I have a request for proposals for a lot of the services that is currently advertised on our website and with Steve and also the municipal association is starting letting that around as well. And then I have two reports that just, you know, have a lot more detail that I attached to this. So if you'd like me to go over those now or pause for questions.
I want to hear questions on the, on anything so far.
Okay, so the American Rescue Plan, I included an overview of what all that will entail for us. And basically, our projected allotment is 3,792,61. And that's based on 75% of our budget with the most recent budget ending January of 2020. And so that's 75% of that. Our allotment was around 6,000, but you know, because of our size and our budget, we're only going to be allocated so much. Now, a lot of the metropolitan cities in Charleston have already received their share. We have not, along with a lot of others. And we probably won't until, looking on October. Which doesn't mean we can, we can go ahead and get started with the work that we want to spend this money on. As long as it's after this day back in March of 2021, then we're fine. We, but we should get, you know, the first disbursement, same, the second disbursement won't come until 12 months after that. And I've listed out all of the areas that that thing is eligible for. In particular, highlighting the water sewer and broadband infrastructure, which now also is the stormwater infrastructure, fortunately, so now there's a certain percentage that we are, what we get, that we're allowed to spend on any harvest, you know, any general government harvest that we see fit. And we think that's going to be around $500,000. But I'm still waiting on feedback on that, just to make sure our calculations are correct. However, I think, you know, most of what, at least, you know, what we've been budgeting in a certain way, you know, you all have prioritized drainage falls in with deal of uses, including including spending some money on the water quality for Jamestown Creek. And so if you look at the, sort of the proposed spreadsheet of, you know, how we can do the breakdown, you know, really, we could, what I'm recommending is budgeting about using about half of the funds for drainage projects. And certainly, we already have money in the budget for a lot of these drainage projects already. So that can free up, you know, those funds for other purposes. And then, you know, the other half we could use for sewer infrastructure projects. And now this is not, you know, running sewer where there's, you know, no infrastructure at all. This is replacing aging septic systems that are on the Jamestown Creek watershed basin and bringing those properties onto the public system to help them with water quality. We're still, you know, talking, talking with PSC, talking with our state senators and the Senate and, you know, instrumental and, you know, seeking out some funding from the state. They're also getting a good chunk of money. And she's hoping to get some money allocated specifically for Jamestown Creek that we could. But she does feel certain that we will, they will have to be able to match. So this potentially be that much. There's about $7, $8 million of projects that really need to be done. You know, we're only able to get so much. You know, the PSC does have priorities broken down about, I think it's about 2.5 million. It's on the Julia Park area that's actually on the wire, you know, so we could prioritize it that way. But anyway, options for that, but I just kind of wanted you all to go ahead and have this, think about it. Get back to me at some point, maybe next month or September, we'll have to look at doing a budget limit on these.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question about the inspection. It seems that it's a good idea to do those around the creek. But if funds become limited, is there a way to do inspections on septic systems to identify the ones that are either failing or close to failing or that we really want to put our attention into? And who would do that? We have to pay for those inspection, because that's something that DVT does.
Well, and we are, we're actually, Beau has worked on an ordinance that we talked about several months ago. And he's, you know, sent that to us and staff has made some comments and we're back to work on that with some comments and running about some other folks as well. But that ordinance actually, with us, you know, that would be more sale.
Right, but as far as identifying and making some sort of early, it seems like we need something fairly early as far as identifying those that we need to definitely give attention to.
Yeah.
DVT doesn't do that. So this would be, perhaps we need to contract with the entity that would do these inspections?
Perhaps.
Could the funds be used in that manner?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, so let's go on to the next items.
Well, I haven't never.
Yes. Next.
I'm gonna, this is on the Arts and Cultural Center, just an update. Next, a unit arrived on Tuesday, and so they've been installed now and ran it out on it. Just other, you know, little touch up things before, you know, COs issued. We have a hybrid coordinator, her name is Caroline Self. We had a lot of great applications and I've encouraged you all to look at the London House Art Center, if you're not familiar with that. She was the Arts Education Curator there for 10 years in the Quiet Center in Athens, Georgia. And what was interesting is it's an art, a huge art gallery, about eight different galleries within that art gallery, but it also attached to historic house. That she was also in charge of, you know, giving local tours. And so she definitely had that sort of mesh of the history in, and the history in art that this center will have. So, but she starts on July 22nd. And I've asked her to come here to the August meeting to introduce herself and also maybe go ahead and give you all a overview of what she'll be working on and moving forward from there.
Sorry, there's some, what was the name of the art center she was at?
London House Art Center in YD, O N.
Okay.
Athens, Georgia. Any other questions? Very nice. Go on to the public works report.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so in June, there were eight requests for service, three were drainage related. We've established respond to all requests. We have a monthly meeting for stormwater managers. We have been monitoring the Lighthouse Boulevard drainage sidewalk project. That's going on nicely with ATP. Getting rid of their conflict, that's all they have in drainage. Conflict with their private optical lines, they knew about since January. So, but that's been pending here. Identified locations for additional petway stations from residents' requests. We're getting, you know, everybody's going to love their dogs more. So we had some folks who walked through neighborhoods where we had petway stations and they say, oh yeah, I have one in mind. Take care of it and so on. So we've had a few requests of being installing those soon. We met with the, with the resident on Scooter Road about the drainage study and explained how that went with her. Staff participated in the BCD cog virtual meeting for tri-county stormwater managers. We also participated last month in this year's South Carolina chapter of the American Public Works Association, which was virtual. And I gave a presentation there on our petway station program. Got a few emails there from different communities around the state on how to implement that. Staff participated in the planning meeting with third course upcoming association stormwater managers. And we just had a reconstruction meeting for the redevelopment of Corrigan Falling Camp Road by Chase Bank. Staff cleaned fire signs on June and installed two new stop signs and vegetation on the right of way to improve driver vision at various locations. And he may have finished Douglas out and about. And it's never any process, the, this is the rainy season, so he's making the rounds. So we'll see.
Okay, any questions?
I choose. Since the last tropical storm, there's a tree that I guess had fallen into the road on Fort Johnson. And I see that they've pushed it back a little bit, not mistaken, kind of by the honey hill road in your section.
Oh yes, I know where it's gone.
Yeah, it's right on the road. Do you have any idea when that's going to be addressed?
DOT is going to take care of it, but I don't know when. Probably when they need to pick up trees to take care of, they take their contractors. I will say with DOT, they just started their new budget year also. And what I've been told is that they've got their contracts up and running and it's just a technical issue.
I'm just concerned because it's literally like right on the road.
I, yeah.
I know you're saying it. I was just bringing it up, thank you.
Yes, I was wondering about the Bradley Park ditch. Somebody's dug a ditch.
Yes.
Our friends in Bay City are nice enough to do that. Whenever they're digging out for their lines coming down, Bradley, I stopped and I asked them and they said, what looked like it would be done over here. So I said, thank you. Very nice.
All right, so there wasn't a ditch or?
Oh no, there was. It was supposed to be.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's filled in and overgrown and I have a work order in the DOT for the better part of six weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
The previous owner, Mr. Brayley, used to have that, that ditch dug out regularly. And it gets, it gets a little.
Right, it was nice now.
Okay, any other? Thank you. Okay, so I want to check for control reports. Lieutenant James.
Good evening. Good evening. I'll start off with yesterday, yesterday we had some shots fired during a fuel procession in North Charleston. So they were in the fuel procession and they were shooting from the top of the car out of the sunroof and hit a dwelling and hit a car. And they ended up coming over here to the, where the procession led to over here at Criminal Road at the cemetery and located the car and waited on the car to be stopped. The car, the suspects at that time were not in the car from them. We've got some video of everything that's still under investigation as far as no one was hit, no one was injured. North Charleston is the lead on that investigation, but because it led over into the county, all over on Jamestown, inside North Charleston, it should be. We had a shooting that you know about, I spoke to you before, in Central Park Road where a house was shot up two nights in a row. Still investigating, some of the people were uncooperative, residents, as far as helping us. We know that one of the gentleman was outside, he knows who did it, but I've been over there twice and talked to the mother numerous times and he won't cooperate who did it. But we haven't had any more shootings right there. We got an underage drinking party in the 600 block of Evans Drive on June 26th around 2:00 PM. And the party's investigated, a few citations were, were written on that one, some parents so fired. Kind of burglary at a firework stand and they were stolen from a locked trailer. It was forcibly entered on June 28th. Obviously, firework season's over, so we're, that must still be investigated, but obviously that's already gone live. Trailer's already gone. I mean, a larceny in 700 block Sterling on June 15th, where still a bicycle was stolen and then it being recovered, got back to the victim, unknown and we didn't find a suspect on it, but it was charged. We had a burglary in Lynn Avenue where residents has entered, the speaker was stolen, that's still active. We had a larceny on Hills Left Road where a stolen concrete saw was taken around June 30th. Still being investigated. We had a decent exposure in the 1800 block of Camp Road on July 1st at 7:00 AM. One was charged decent exposure after being located partially naked in front of a daycare. So she, she was arrested. We had an auto break in the 1300 block of Stone Coast Road where a vehicle was forcibly entered and it's unknown what was stolen. I don't think any of them stole it, so we're not really sure why it was forcibly entered. As you know, almost all our car break ins are unlocked vehicles. We had a gunshot man was in the 1500 block of Camp Road on July 3rd around 7:00 PM. Car had a round hit a wheel well, there's no suspects. Around July 5th, Blue Water Gas Station was forcibly entered and some cigarettes and beer were stolen. The suspect at this time was being investigated. 1000 block of Bin Road on July 5th, some juvenile like fireworks abandoned residents and caught it all by fire. And that was extinguished. Kristi, no, just damage was seen to that?
Okay.
Okay. We had an auto break in on June 30th on Pauline Avenue. Unlocked vehicle was entered, nothing stolen. And then we had some auto break ins at Rockover Park Street on July 8th where a few people were broken into and stolen. And then two nights ago, we had a traffic stop where a gentleman bailed out of a car. We identified him and we're in there charging him with possession of stolen firearm, had a half pound of marijuana, over an ounce of cocaine, and we know the suspect. And our cop team is investigating that, so they're beginning surveillance on them.
Any questions with Luke and James? Thank you so much, Chris Luke. All right, so now we'll move to request for approval and the first is RFA, Bill, and your any assessment?
So, well, this is where we had several sequels developed that we've had a mix. And so we do have budgeted the funds for drainage assessment area. This is similar to what we recently did in Wood Haven, where they would camera and also do an assessment, make recommendations and give us a cost estimate for those improvements so we can move forward with improvements to that whole subdivision.
Motion approved. So, second?
Second.
Discussion? There are none, I'll tip say aye?
Aye.
Foes? Step passes. Next, good, brand services for CD, CD, EG, and Gaia Green, Jamestown Creek, and Gaia Green.
Yeah, and to you know, you know, we've listed Jamestown Creek Basin Drainage Master Plan as one of the items that we could fund with, you know, the American Rescue Plan. She's still a Tri-Creek, not Creek, I agree, plan. Grant funding to help with this, so it can be more drainage project. Now, I would say I would not recommend approving the grant administration clause. I think that's something that I can handle in-house. But the grant writing, setting up this grant is pretty involved. Set a seminar with Del Culbrot, who is the consultant that we hired for, of course, one of the ones that we hired for some groundwork. Then they call us and I was just saying like that, area engineering can be high credit.
So motion approved? I would like to make the motion that we approve the $7,500 for grant writing. Omen?
The second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? There are none, or can you say aye?
Aye.
Both? So that passes. Next, we go to town holiday decorations.
And we, so we talked about this at a couple of other workshops and I know we didn't move forward that last year with COVID and not really in an extent, so I think we wanted to bear last year. But as residents, I've been, you know, wanting to know where our holiday decorations are and, and we do have these new lights here at Camp Hill's World that have some sets upon them that we, um, it's hard to do that, um, that we can, um, easily plug these lights into. Um, we, I've, I've talked with the PSD and they are willing to, um, install a, an Alara. We don't have the equipment to do that. Uh, so that would be a cost force. Um, uh, you know, our, my recommendation is to, um, move forward with, um, the Caroline branch, which I think would, um, would just be something nice, given that we're, you know, recently named a Tree City and also, um, we'd be the first town in South Carolina to have them, so it'd be something kind of different and unique. Um, but maybe putting it out to the public, giving the pellets and fun, giving the options, um, you know, maybe see an alternating of the reef or another decoration. Um, but basically the, and then another thing was just getting some, um, some of the great John, um, decorations that we could, um, hang here in our giant pantry because we have a power source three plus five. I think that would look really nice, um, and they're very inexpensive. Um, but if you all decided to move forward with a proposal tonight, um, I would, um, go ahead and put it out to the public and then, um, depending on, you know, what, what they came back with, um, finalizes all the bring that back to all of our markets.
So is motion approved?
So.
Is it second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I received some input from one of our residents that I talked with that was useful. I think it is a good idea that that holiday spirit, decorations, and I think that's a great thing. Uh, but given that we have extra money in our budget at this point, perhaps it's another consideration as we revisit our budget to allocate some resources to James Island Outreach, uh, for the holiday season, for Thanksgiving and for Christmas, uh, so that we can take care of some of the details. I always feel the money behind decorations, when there's people down the hunger, and I would really rather have everything going down.
Thank you. Any, uh, further discussion? There are none, or can you say aye?
Aye.
Both? So that passes. Next, we go to town hall, age back maintenance.
I sent you all a proposal, um, just this morning. I was asked for the lay and we were back and forth with a few vendors, um, actually the vendor then installed, um, the system to your town hall. And then one, for you all, they can actually is the manufacturer of the units that we have in the town hall stock. Um, they made us that much of a price. Um, I think it was 30,000, um.
Thirty-three fifty.
But thank you. Thirty-three fifty, um, for that maintenance and, um, really the preventative maintenance, I think is, is what we need. I'm not sure. It would help with the compressor issues that we had. I think that was, um, that was something different. Um, but certainly to keep our warranties, we need that. You know, one of the questions I had was just while I was waiting to get this to you all was just to make sure that, um, we didn't need to go with Triad, who actually did the installation, warrants, bank, and warranty, and we did not, and we didn't come with the actual brand, whether it's Stankin or, in this case, Lennox, um, we counsel changers.
Is there a motion approved? So, is it second? Sorry. Any other discussion?
So the system that was purchased, when it was still within the set cap, a manufacturer's warrant to be on it?
It does, and it has an extended warranty. It's the, um, we haven't replaced this, it's a year, it's just a compressor in the system that's what was being replaced and that compressor has a five-year extended warranty. Um.
Actually, there's a report.
Oh, I, I have a question. I was looking through, um, the maintenance agreement and it says that it does not cover any of the piping or ductwork. Is that covered under some other, uh, area that we have?
It's more like clean, like a ductwork?
Doesn't say, it just says piping or ductwork. So I'm, I'm thinking like, you know, the insulation on the ductwork is damaged or if piping is treated to by squirrels or do you think there's damage to that?
I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. One of the things we didn't include, um, was the, um, that we could have included was the filters. That's something that we could do here and replace that ourselves.
Right. Okay. I mean, I don't know how much, I'm sorry, Karen. I don't know if that's a big, huge expense if we had to replace pipes and ductwork and all that. I mean, it could be a business decision, but, but I don't know, is that the difficulty that's covered in any other maintenance agreements or that's not?
Yeah, I would have to go back and look. There are, there are a lot of things covered in this, I've had it come through with recently. Um, and there were a lot of different, you know, not just the compressor, a lot of, yeah, parks that were, that were covered, so I'm not exactly sure.
If, the only thing I have is, thank you. The only question I have was for the, that it doesn't cover the replacement of the complete. Is that covered by our warranty?
Doesn't cover.
The replacement of the complete, like if it, if it, if the complete.
Well, this is just the maintenance agreement.
Okay. Warranty.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be under a warranty issue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So can we also reduce beyond three years again since they are servicing that? And did they give you any idea what it would cost out of three years, like after August 2024?
Um, they did not.
Okay. It should be pretty low if they have confidence in their tax.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? There are none, or can you say aye?
Aye.
Both? That passes. Let's move on to committee reports. Next, we have the land use.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, we.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Even, uh, we, yes, let's go ahead. So, uh, so next item on the agenda is 2,000 landscaping of J I A C C. Is there motion approved?
So.
Is it second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, what this is for is to make it look a little nicer in time for the opening. Uh, we have two big tree stumps in the front and they'd like us to make it look a little nicer out there. We're going to welcome our residents to our new James Island Arts and Culture Center.
Any further discussion? There are none, or can you say aye?
Aye.
Both? That passes. So thanks for the committee reports. Land use committee?
Yes, um, I would like to announce that I would like to call it a land use committee meeting before our next town council meeting and I was hoping that actually could help coordinate, coordinate appropriate time. Um, also, I was informed that we've got an application at the Glashaw Ford Martyrs' booth space. It sounds really exciting and it sounds like something that could really be, um, a benefit to this particular corner. And that's all I have for land use.
Thank you. Any questions? So, uh, now let's go to environmental education committee.
Yes, our committee did not, but, um, I do have a question that relates to environmental education, also the James Island Arts and Culture Center. Uh, we have voted for, uh, allocating some resources for solar panels for the building and I was wondering what the timeframe might be to start the process of getting bids at summer for that to happen.
Um, I have a contact, I just have not reached out.
Okay, all right. Might we expect some sort of, uh, report at the next meeting?
Yes, I will have a report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
And next, uh, showrooms committee, there's no report. Public safety committee, Councilwoman.
Just a word ahead of the meeting, um, next Thursday at 7:00, May 27th. That's all I have for it.
Next, the history committee. The history council met, uh, the, um, first Tuesday in July and, uh, the, um, major work will be, uh, the next major project will, uh, member of council, highness, perhaps will be working for a historical marker in Three Trees School. Any, uh, questions? Next is, um, rethink Folly Road. And, um, rethink Folly Road met on, it's like June 23rd and, uh, largest, most interesting news from that meeting was that, uh, rethink Folly Road, your committee has in concert agreed to work towards a brand with the National Park Service regarding, um, rivers, trails and conservation. It's a technical system grant, a little funding grant, but it would involve looking at, um, walking and biking access over Wahoo Cut somewhere, but maybe near 17, excuse me, near Folly Road and then, um, connecting down Folly Road to, uh, Changelon County Park. Uh, there's the property, uh, and business group, you know, just barely getting started. Um, the, um, rethink Folly Committee has requested our, um, consultants to have a educational meeting for all the elected officials at the, uh, intergovernmental meeting. And I think we had hoped it would be at the next intergovernmental meeting, but at the time, it's not right. It's only next week. They'll be at the next one after that. There'll be an update or, you know, explanation of the project, what's going on with it to all elected officials. And, um, the state of the plan events every year, the, um, rethink Folly Committee has an event, state of the plan and it's, um, we're currently under postponement, hardly it's waiting for what this council determines is what we're going to do with Frankly Park if that's going to be associated with that event. Um, but, you know, it'll be a little bit cooler when we get to it with maybe the latest report. And, uh, that's all I have on the rethink Folly Road. Are there any other questions? Yes, okay, thank you. Um, next, uh, management.
Yes, um, we'll be having our next meeting, um, August 17th at 3:00 PM on Tuesday. And, um, so everyone is invited to that conference and that's all I have for it.
Business development committee, I've announced.
No report from this last month, but we will be meeting in August. David, we're coming. Many thanks to Joe Walters, who's here tonight to call me today and relax me when we need to get everybody back together.
Thank you. Any questions? So next, the advisory committee, Councilman Bill, none report. Um, Changelon Intergovernmental Council, so we will be meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 here. And, um, as thinking about it, town administrator said that one item on the agenda is, uh, getting together, um, making a proposal to the state to use some of their federal money and back to us to help with the Changelon Waterfall. Senator Sims asked us to move something. Right, so, um, I believe that's all our committee reports. So next, I have a proclamation recognizing Deion Lamont Davis Jr. for perfect attendance. You're here, or you're ready? So, listen to, read the, uh, proclamation. Proclamation in rec, please stand. Proclamation of recognition of perfect attendance, Deion Lamont Davis Jr. Whereas regular school attendance is fundamental to student achievement, perfect attendance is therefore a worthwhile and a difficult goal to attain. And whereas Deion Lamont Davis Jr. has maintained permanent school attendance from pre-K, K, grades one through 12, 14 consecutive school years, and we commend him on his outstanding accomplishment. And whereas family support is of utmost importance to student success, we acknowledge Deion's family, Deion's family, his father, Deion Lamont Davis Senior, mother, Janice, Janice Reed Davis of James Island for their contributions to his exceptional school attendance and education. The bribe, the faulty mayor, along with all members of town council, hereby recognize the permanent attendance record of Deion Lamont Davis Jr., where he succeeded successfully earned a 3.6828, 3.628 GPA. We wish Deion the very best as he tends to Citadel to major in intelligence and security studies. Aye. Both?
None.
Basically, so much.
They do know.
All right. Uh, next, we have resolution 21 of A, the resolution point of referendum to increase the town council from four to six members. Uh, if there's no objection before we start, I would like to correct, uh, the scrimmers' error that the, um, date at the bottom.
So, November 2023?
Yes, that should be the second, the second day, uh, November 2nd, 2021. So this would be a, uh, for a referendum at the election this fall in November. Um, is there motion approved?
I approve.
Is it second? Also, we're discussing. Okay, um, can I speak to it?
Yes, this is kind of a review, it's something from all this 15, um, 2019 that Justin Logan and I, they were quite interested in. Um, this is, um, just something that had been bounced around since 2010, but as old timers here and, um, they're losing, uh, council, uh, local and public member. In 2010, there was a, um, referendum put before the public, um, to distribute them and they had passed 54% from what I recall. And this is kind of similar to this. Um, I think that we have so many other municipalities, so much smaller than we are, rather than Hollywood, I will come to Berkeley County, Moncks Corner, that had six representatives. Um, and they have a lot bigger smaller than us. So we're now around a little over 12,000 people and I'm not speaking in it. This would be good for us. Furthermore, that would create stagnant terms that, um, you know, that will not negatively impact any, you know, programs. Still give, give us stagnant terms that U S senators have and government has. And, um, so that's just kind of the, it just holds.
Any, uh, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
The, um, this resolution is to put a referendum on the upcoming November, about 2021, sorry. And then if it passes, it would take effect 2023.
Yes.
Question. And then those two new seats, how would we stagger the two new seats from the current?
The top, the top four, um, would be, um, four-year terms. The bottom two would be two-year terms.
In terms of votes?
Yes, yes, who comes in and think of what about? Um, so number five, number six would be two-year terms, number one, two, three, four, four-year terms.
Do you know, or does anybody know, what's the deadline to get, uh, for like a better order of request to elections for county? If we wanted to have an election before 2023, like in 2022, what if we added two seats, four-year terms, so that there would still be a stagger in, in rolling the same way?
Who comes to decide it around? I think 2019, we just researched and I'll call, I'll assume all the details out of it.
For instance, I assume that by now it's too late to have an election this November to more council seats.
The, um, issue is we can't pass the referendum and the local people will be saying, well, the referendum to allow six seats to pass first.
Okay.
And then we can have election for. And in the it's a matter of when it's like ninety days, sixty days, or something like that. So the election commission will sometimes be strongly discouraging about to some, you know, what we don't want to do, we don't have election on this state. Something like that. So there's a little bit of negotiation about who would be appropriate time down the election. But we could have election before, you know, special election, we can have special election. And any election we have, we pay for it. And so we would have to pay for the special election. We have additional special election.
And then if we do it, well, just plan it out, which would be two two lowest receiving members, but two-year term, and then there would be another special election to your top.
It'd be regular scheduled election. I wouldn't stay for those two. Because we're already done, and this would be going on.
So it's twenty twenty, the next, the next general election becomes twenty twenty three. And so in twenty twenty five is our next general election, but it would be twenty twenty five. And so we would have to amend our, our election processes to have the rule where they, for the, for that first time, for that one time, that, that two other people, two vote getters in twenty twenty three would have had two-year terms. And then in our regular term election, twenty twenty five, then they would be, their two-year terms would be up, and then there would be another election. And who was elected in twenty twenty five is our four years from twenty nine. So it wouldn't be like some people sort of two years perpetual, it's just even after the start.
Yeah, that was the main issue I had about having two different sets of terms. I didn't like the idea of having some two-year terms and four-year terms. So the amendment that I would propose would be that we have, we have two additional members, but they don't start until twenty twenty five, and it's four years. Because that way everybody's at four years and everything's even. It also staggers the terms.
So you are making amendment, and so the amendment you're proposing is to?
Stagger terms such that four members of council will be elected every four years, and two members will be elected two years subsequent for four-year terms.
So even try to get this right, so four of us, we would be four candidates, we run in twenty twenty three. Then in twenty twenty five, there'd be an election for two. Okay.
For a four-year term?
A four-year term, yes. That's an interesting question, right?
So actually, you know, so we don't need, where in the resolution are the articles? I mean, you were going to make amendment, especially if that's what you do.
So in other words, we're getting the stagger that the state law asks for with that, and everybody's terms are the same.
See, the way this is written says in section B in the beginning, stagger terms such that some members of council will be elected every two years. So I came into this, I was thinking there would be two, there would be some seats that were two-year seats.
Now, that's not what that means. It just means that, what it means is that every two years, some people would be up for election. And they're not, they're being perpetual, two-year seats. It did not speak, as I don't see anywhere in the actual resolution that it speaks to how do we stagger the times. But it does seem that six would come up in twenty, in four, six, two additional positions built in the next initial. I'm sorry, this is, this is all.
Because it says all six.
I think that we should just withdraw this and come back to it next month.
I would second that motion, just to clean it up a little bit.
Kind of there is some confusion, however, I would say I do found, you know, very intriguing, very interesting. But there does appear to be some confusion, and you agree with Justin Wilk. So we can come back in the next month or year. I object, and you're the audience. So if we can come back to this office.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we'll just withdraw this and bring it back. All right, the next item on the agenda is ordinances for first reading, this is the ordinance in two cities in conversation with the mayor. Is there a motion to approve?
So maybe.
Sir, second. Hey, I would like to speak to the, the motion.
Paulson. Yes, sir. And thank you to Ash for helping me do the ordinance out in the code sections. So as I'm seeing it right now, the compensation for our time air position is fifteen thousand dollars. I think that if we raise it to forty-eight, we could attract a lot of interest. So that's what this is directed at. I wasn't aware that the council members made eighty-five hundred on here, I feel like that was more than I thought we were getting, but I had to fill that part in, so I've heard of town staff on that. In my opinion, competition breeds really great results. And also, in my opinion, this, even though it's classified as part-time, it's pretty demanding time-wise. So I think this is fair and in line with the time spent. I think it would attract qualified interest, you know, from other people within the town. I would I would bet that fifteen thousand that we currently offer is pretty far down on the spectrum of what other towns offers wants. So I think it's a good idea, it won't take effect until twenty twenty three. And yeah, I believe you guys support it, I think it's a good idea. If you have any question here, I will have to answer it.
Am I, any further discussion?
And we've just said this before, you know, my biggest concern is I wouldn't be able to correct citizen participation. You know, I'm really good with reference. And with public service, we're going to ask for a pay increase, I wish you hope. I mean, I would have amendments, amendments to do this on that. I mean, you know, this was bad, I see your point, you were saying, you know, I, I respect this. But I think that there should be a direct citizen participation, your decisions such as this.
So would you, are you making amendment?
I would propose, you know, along with mine, proposal, that we put this on A, number referendum to the public, see if they go with something they delight from their own appreciations. Because, you know, we are public servants, I think that people should find this anyway.
I would appreciate that, I, my understanding of the first reading is that there would be a public hearing next month. I might be wrong about that.
I don't believe a public hearing would be necessary.
It may not be necessary, it could be possible. We could invite everybody to come down and weigh in, tell us what they think about, you know, raising the salary. In that way, we would be able to hear from town residents without waiting for a referendum.
So now we're drawing a limit, then, we can do that then.
I think that'd be totally fine, invite everybody out, come down to the next, the August meeting and tell us what they think. I mean, I've tried to flip this by just people I know, it was annually, my neighbors, things like that, so. Let's invite everyone out next time, if, assuming that it passes first reading, it's just first reading, right, it's not done. And then we'll have a public hearing, and then the second.
One thing that I'm curious about is what other municipalities have their interests. So that would be something that I think would be useful information to have in between now and next eight. I think it would be interesting to find out what strong mayor forms a government in similar-sized towns pay their benefits. I think that would be an interesting comparison. Because that would have some comparison. I just don't really know if it's too much or not enough, or, you know, if it's not enough to future mayor agree to the justice, if it's.
Nobody thinks for the month.
That's for sure.
So the, I had a study with Don Meyer Committee. This counts, like legally, you know, three. And they came up with fifteen thousand for if there was a town administrator. And then thirty-five thousand if there was not. And so the theory was that if there's no town administrator, mayor would be full-time, often be here, operate all day, administrator. He hasn't noticed this, like, that's a long time ago. And so those figures are, you know, they're not reflective inflation. You know, my, when this council passed fifteen thousand, this town passed fifteen thousand almost a decade ago, the inflation since that time brings it up to about seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand five hundred, much less. Forty-eight thousand, my opinion has always been that a number like forty-eight thousand, which I think the town before is too little to have someone have this be their full-time job. And so, you know, while I kind of just recently retired, for many, many years, I was full-time in customs, federal, and this was my hard time, you know, and so that's how I performed to do this. And, and there may be other people who are able to, well, in any case. So I think forty-eight thousand's actually too little to have someone who'd be like, some guy can afford to do this for forty-eight thousand, unless they weren't retired. And it's too much for someone who basically depends on town administrator operating there. I admit also that it is, it is very easy as mayor, with our small towns, it's been a long time. You know, so that is just, anyway, those are just my thoughts.
And I, I have a question, it would be good for us to know, like, I, I know you attend a bazillion meetings. You're going to be alive, you're doing alive, back and forth with different municipalities, city of Charleston, county of Charleston, et cetera, et cetera, it would be good for us to understand, because I'm sure you're working significantly more on your hours than just quite time. Do you have, do you have a guesstimate?
No. So, but anyway, I think you could, I'm up with some information on what other stuff, invite them.
One of the masks.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we did, five dollar, I have a mask report tonight.
I think it's on, I'll, I'll get the figures, I think it's probably a part of, they have a compensation survey that they do every year.
The challenge is, okay, so there might be a municipality without our population, but instead and then we, in that segment, probably aren't, and then they'll be able to populate a municipality, population of a thousand, we want a staff of three. So we have a combination, so the staff force is small, often most municipalities, it's out there. We have a relatively large population relative to the size of our town. Because Changelon obviously provides solid ways to fire and if you want to control, rather than armed police forces. So anyways, complicated, but that would be provide information, I'm, I'm very surprised with that, which is what the committee did, again, years ago. All right, any further discussion?
Do you think they do not want to verbally conduct, and both will be willing to do this till next month, till we get this research?
Right.
Oh, okay.
This is special. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Okay, here none, all papers aye?
Aye.
No, so that passes on. So that passes on. Three, two. All right, so next, we'll go to ordinance twenty twenty one of four, ordinance of Southwood Jones, extensive prevention of public threat. And so I move that we adopt this as second.
Seven.
Okay, I'll speak to, so we had interest on council to clarify who, we have, we have the general intention records developed by the state municipalities, they provide minimums for how long to keep various policies of records of low maximums. And so there's interest to have maximums. And so we have the power to opt out of that general one and then adopt something that would have to be approved by the director of the Department of Architecture and History. So the first part of this, it says after the minimum required retention period of town law, promptly destroy banking and other financial records, make all personal financial information public, which seems to be a major concern of some of these counties. I would like at this point to move to strike section B and C. Is there, is there second? Both B and C referred prior to the pandemic.
What's the effect of striking the boundary?
Well, then this would, our ordinance would speak only to public records of this, of the current town since two thousand twelve. The reason why I was, well, is there a second?
Or consideration?
Okay, so it's in second, so anyways, I have to discuss, and so the, I was advised by the attorney that that this town is not the legal successor of the previous towns, and therefore, under the South Carolina Public Records Act, I should contact the director of the South Carolina Department of Architecture and History and tell him that we are in possession of records of these, of these previous towns, and that they closed down and, you know, and that, you know, that I stood from our town attorney in conversation that they took, taken such material from other municipalities and you know, what house needs posts, and they contacted us back and said, we'll take them and send someone to look at them, and they will be back from the bug and take them to South Carolina Department Archives, and then they will decide to take them to public. And so therefore, none of this is relevant.
So just out of curiosity, and the question is, if they have the Bureau of Archives, what are their options? Are there options to them? Archive the material, destroy the material, for them, and eventually return the material to them?
No, they, I mean, I think we could ask them for it, but wouldn't we get copies of any of the ones that's with you? They would basically keep it, the, the material that, it would follow their procedures. And so some things, like minutes, would be kept. And but financial records and things would be destroyed.
Are, are the minutes in these documents that we, that we had up here at our last meeting, the documents from the previous town?
No, the documents we have in previous town are much more expensive.
Where are the documents that were stacked up here at the special meeting?
They're in boxes in the town hall.
So when is the archive folks coming together?
Tuesday.
Okay. I'm going to pick up all the old checks and the tax relief materials. And then in my.
Most of the things.
Other things other than the stuff that we noted on?
Yes.
Okay. Like what?
All the records that were in possession of the town that belong to previous town.
So did this? So did this solution of the previous towns, everything was, I understand, was supposed to be delivered to them, right? And it wasn't?
Right.
Do you know why?
No.
Do you know where it sat during those intervals?
No, some, at different places, some of it, I know something about, some was in the attic of the old town hall.
So something that used to be sitting in the attic of the old town hall is now asking if we're spending taxpayer dollars to have someone come and look at, decided it's historic?
The, I, the, the Department of, um, History and Records and Employee Leaders is going to come talk, they, that's, they're not paying them anything to do it.
Right, the public is paying them, right? And this, these are materials that were just basically in limbo for an unknown, out of time, place, and now they're being requested to request the archives folks to go through and determine whether these materials, which were basically lost to everyone, are now special and restored?
I would say that that's the case, they're gonna take them and do what they're supposed to.
But are there some of the choices of, of that they would do with, and I think they would have already had the minutes from the old town?
No.
What if we do with our minutes from our town? We, we have all of our.
Do you?
No, but I think, do you send it periodically to any other government entity or, you know, you just keep it yourself?
It's the way it is.
Okay.
And, you know, so, we, um, state laws matters suggest that yes, it should have been sent down, followed up, and blessed. And, um, and not have been, sometimes aware that it was supposed, that was supposed to have been done. And when I asked them, you know, how they should be disposed of, they said, we'll come get them. And then they will take care of those, maybe if appropriate. And what I was told by the, um, person in charge of municipal records is that they would apply the general, um, schedule, see those records, if that's what they have scheduled.
So would we be violating state law if we did not have them take the records away?
I'm, that's the vice I would see.
I think that's what was supposed to happen if this was in prior town.
Okay.
And if a lot of things went in Charleston County, they were set up as a receiver shell. And we, we have records from them, just by summer, they were earned. There's still plenty of records from previous towns, but they're, they'll have to come get it.
On the call, the councilman, uh, the county councilman clearly set up for us, on the call, that storage.
So, I, so we're not keeping any copies of any of this previous town debt, right? We're not keeping any of the, any of the check stuff, or we're not keeping any copies, we're giving them all of the paperwork that we have regarding this last town that has nothing to do with us.
It's actually two, three, three previous towns.
Okay, well, forgive me, the three previous towns that has nothing to do with this current town to be assessed for historical value? Why do they, why do they need, or be, be put wherever these are put according to their decision? Why do they need the financial documents from like all these? Why wouldn't we?
Well, I, they would be, because they're public records of previous town, and so they are the responsibility of, not our responsibility. So in any case, um, so there's a motion to strike those two items about public records of prior towns, because those won't be in our possession, and so they're not relevant, and will only leave the part that reflects to our records.
I thought, Larry, we had a record retention policy.
There's no, um, the current record retention policy is the, the general one provided from the director of the Department of Archives and History. And it does not include any maximum, so you can keep things as long as you want. But there are, there are some minimums, you can destroy certain checks immediately, you have to keep them for three years. Um, and minutes, you have to keep permanent, so there's, you know, there are levels, kind of, there's been a whole schedule. In any case, what this would do is would add, create a, um, would add that we would destroy banking and other financial records and then to personal financial information as seen as the schedule allow.
Well, how does this affect the two votes that we've had to destroy the materials from the tax?
Oh, I don't think it does affect it.
So those are going in boxes to come on, right?
Yes.
There's no rule that prohibits us from, I mean, if we kept them for a decade, assuming there's a rule that prevents us from destroying them.
Yes, there is a rule that makes it illegal to destroy public records.
Right, but these are records from a town that we rule void, meaning they.
They're not ours, then.
It's all, right? Be a whole thing void, not void of all, where you'd say at the end of it, now it's done, but they said, what they ruled by the member record is that the town from its inception. So the records are void. It seems like we're adding a bunch of steps to prevent this council vote from being carried out, so we.
I guess what I don't understand, all right, there's two things, I think that it does box them up in a circular column, yeah, there, there are. So that does address what we did in a way. What I don't understand is, this seems to be what we're supposed to do anyway, according to statute, isn't it?
It adds an additional requirement about after, so currently, there is no requirement to destroy any banking, there's no requirement to destroy anything, we can destroy some things after a certain period of time. But we are not required, and so this would require us, and it would apply, the A applies to, um, the documents we have today of the current town that we're responsible for, that, and then B and C would, uh, all refer to prior towns, and, um, they're throughout the, the, the general part of town, they're taken by the director of, um, Archives and History.
I'm, I'm sorry, so if we already have the rules for minimum required retention period, and why is, why is an additional ordinance necessary to destroy a current town?
Um, I would say that this fails, that we'll need to see, in fact, it's just there would be no requirement to destroy, um, personal and, um, banking and other, uh, financial records, including personal financial information of the public after the minimum counters they must sweep out.
So I, my secondary question, sorry to beat this step, so after the minimum required period for keeping financial documents, what is this current town right now doing? Are we, are we destroying them as soon as the minimum's up? What is our protocol that we're doing now, or are we just hanging on to them?
I would say we're just hanging on to them.
Yeah, currently, everything is, you know, it's, um, we have a lot of, we have several totes, a lot of totes in the attic that we box up and put up there, um, that, you know, we, this town's pretty new, you know, twenty twelve, so we don't have a whole lot. Um, I guess most of the stuff was left over to previous towns. So yeah, so we're not, you know, after three years, we're not automatically just shredding everything that we can, I have to answer your question.
And we can come back to that part later, to me, this whole thing reads like a side step, or two prior votes directing the mayor to destroy those documents that were out here and poured out forward at our caution. So I'm not favoring this.
All right.
So concerning the potential policy that fits, but calling the archives, the office, kind of sign steps, it's just adding a lot of unnecessary time after the steps to something that's already been determined, twice determined, and I think we don't hold, you know, if this council's vote is worthless, then why are we all here? Why are those people here? Why are we gathered? If the vote doesn't count.
All right, so where we are is there's been a motion, and second, we lead B and C, and some people bring that, we're voting all in favor of deleting B and C, who said aye? Aye, opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
So is there any further discussions of the, uh, ordinance?
I think we should put this down.
Any other?
I don't know why we would have voted for it, it just seems like good behavior to do what you should do and destroy the information per the statutes that govern this.
Any other discussion?
Could we have someone from municipal associations bring this to us, I'm very confused? I mean, somebody with the full of the archives.
Think that would be hard to do at this time, so I guess you'd need to defer.
Could we do another, like, we should just defer this, I'm doing further investigation.
Is there a second? Hearing none, so that fails. Anyway, any, uh, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye? All opposed?
Vote aye.
No, that fails. And next we go to the ordinance two thousand twenty-one of five, two thousand twenty-one ordinance, the end of the time, which is two regarding agendas. Is the motion approved? So, is there a second?
Second, I'm sure there is.
Okay, if there's no objection, I would like to vote for this in sections. So there are three basic sections. One changes the deadline for the agenda to Monday preceding the meeting, that's B. The next changes the deadline for the item to the agenda to Friday, when we proceed in the meeting. And then the third part is actually, you know, A, B, C, and D, which, um, which clarifies our rules for adding things to the agenda meeting. So, but is there any objection to concerning these parts? Coming down the way to do that, and so the first part would be, um, changing the deadline for, um, sending out the agenda to Monday preceding the meeting, Friday.
I would like to make an amendment to this.
Okay.
Maybe because I feel like waiting till Monday does not give the public ample time to look at it. So I would like to say, um, in that sentence, go ahead and keep it Friday, all right? And also maybe even make it explicit to where the sentence would read. Shall be distributed to the council and made available to the public no later than Friday preceding the meeting.
So, so we would add, do you want to add amendment language after the council and provide to the public?
And made available.
And made available.
And that could be through the electronic meeting, we already see that.
Francis.
It could be taped to the door, town hall.
Yes, okay, yeah, we get that, we get that line, so anyway, so is there a second? Okay, and yeah, so we were discussing. Any further discussion?
So this amendment is saying that all the agenda and information material will be distributed to council on Friday, not Monday?
Right, uh, continue to be Friday, and, um, and then add to the public, that will be distributed.
Thank you.
Any, uh, discussion amendment? Hearing none, whenever you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if that passes. So, uh, now we go to, um, the second part, which is changing the deadline the council took place, item to the agenda from Wednesday to Friday.
Well, I think that we need an amendment there because it would be hard for staff to put everything together if it's due Friday. So I think we need to change that to Thursday.
I know people, so you gotta talk with, um, actually about this, that there's general, generally two categories that we submit things under. One is like, hey, I wanna vote on this topic. And another one is, hey, here's a thing I drafted, I need help with it. Can we put it on the agenda? So if you do the second one, you gotta give them a lot of time, because they have to go back and forth and draft it. First one where you say, this is just a real quick item, you know, that requires a lot of materials or anything other than what I'm sending you. Perhaps, so perhaps that could come through like later, because all they arguably have to do is just cut a page or just type it in there. If you need their help.
Well, we need a second, so the amendments for Thursday is their second, Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, so go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, councilman, so you were saying there's two different types of material, and Ash told you there's something that would require a lot of time, other things would take less time.
So I would advocate for kind of a tier approach to that, if it's just an, an issue or a topic that requires no help from staff other than placing it on the agenda, we could do it later, do it closer to the deadline. If you need help drafting an ordinance or a resolution or what have you, and you need to get it to them sooner, so that you have time to work on it.
So, in, in fact, um, the, so I believe that having, that at the, amend that the agenda after Friday, and if council members can put things same, exact same time it has to be out, is, is, no, it doesn't make sense. And so I think if we use the Thursday deadline or fixes it, um, also that there's just not a requirement, that when, you know, if a councilman puts something in by deadline, and it requires a bunch of help from staff to put something together for them, that just doesn't count. The deadline is for putting everything in, and if you want to get staff help to prepare an amendment, or, you know, or to, or to anything, you know, to prepare a report, you know, that needs to come in, you know, that the deadline, to put things on the agenda, if not a deadline, to get a report, or help, or anything, that all has to come before.
So, so could you just say, could we, and then to say, completed item to be presented on the agenda?
Well, that's, that's what it is. Though I think the Thursday, in my opinion, I think the Thursday is the same as the salt town model. I think a day is reasonable. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, whenever you say aye?
For clear, for clear, we're voting on just that amendment, so it's just number two.
Aye. All right, so we actually are voting on this in parts, and so, um, we, we, I, I mean, in a state in order, so let's go ahead, and we'll go back in a minute. But let's go ahead, and now we're gonna vote on this part as amended, that it's instead of Friday, it says Thursday.
So it's section C?
It's like this is the way I'm amended, this will be a common one.
So, so, so.
C three, soon.
Yes, yeah. So all in favor, is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, okay, so that passes, and honestly, let's go back to, um, the section where we, that we amended, and that was, uh, section B about the deadline, right, where we kept Friday and we added.
And made available to the public.
Okay, so we voted on the amendment, so we amended that, and now let's just have final vote on that section, on section E. So, um, if there's any, if there's any further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so that passes. Okay, then the last, uh, involved item that we, um, bring to, uh, bring to the agenda after the meeting. And after the, uh, And after the last meeting, after reviewing the state statute about what we file and looking at our ordinance, it was not obvious that we need to have an express motion that emergency items are, that the council finds that it's a emergency circumstance and that that should be an express motion. And so this will make that planned in our ordinance as it is in state statute. And then also in state statute, there is a provision that if we put on the agenda item where we take a vote, if not a final vote, so on an in, a big vote, that that, that agenda requires two votes to vote. Now, the item A for discussion only is not supposed to, is not going to discuss to you. Section Y'all, that just is in our ordinance. So is any discussion of this section?
A through D?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion, why the question about D? Because D seems to require you to have two-thirds vote to amend the agenda and then further a two-thirds vote to pass whatever you're voting on if it's something that's gonna be acted on.
Yes.
Without further vote. I, I think as it is right now, it's two-thirds vote to amend the agenda, majority to pass.
I don't think it's clear in the statute or, or is not in our ordinance.
This seems to raise the bar from a majority to pass the item to a two-thirds vote to pass the item, which I'm not in favor of. So I would make a motion that we amend to eliminate paragraph I, D.
So is there a second describing D?
Second. So again, what I'm, what I'm focused on here is that it requires two-thirds, which is four of us, to amend, which is how it's always been since, I think, this short time. But then, while we have example, the last vote, which was not followed, but we voted four to one to amend the agenda, and then after that, you only have to have three votes actually passed on it.
Majority.
Right, majority, which is why I think it should remain at. Now, this subsection D raises it to require you to have two-thirds to pass the item.
Well, I think that any action that is passed without public notice or public comment should only pass if it asks for clear support. And so even if the majority puts it on the agenda and then after it's put on the agenda, what is actually done is not have that strong consensus, I don't think it should be done. And I, and I don't believe that either the state law or our ordinance, or our, our, plainly said that it only takes majority after it's put on the agenda. So this town has, I told last week, we have never added an action item onto the agenda because it's emergency, it has never happened before. And then up until three years ago, it was, the interpretation of court decisions was it was always the legal act and it's to the agenda at the meeting. And that our rules had no way to add anything to the agenda after the, agenda was published on the Friday, for the year. That's the only way. And so three years ago, when the statute was changed, the state statute was changed that allowed, so the Supreme Court said that actually recommends we have to have agendas and that all those court decisions were wrong. And then the legislature passed a law that requires us to add agendas and requires us to, it allows us to put things on the agenda meeting. But, you know, it hasn't, it's like that, it's clear.
This subsection D seems to go beyond what the code section requires.
Well, it is, I think, if you just try it, then it's still, if it's, the state law requires two-thirds vote, that's still required, state law.
So the state law requires two-thirds vote to add an item to the agenda. Then after that, you look to the state law for how do you pass an item once it's on the agenda, which is important. It's very clear.
Okay. So anyway, so there's a motion and second describing D, no discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so I go none. Okay, so now we're back to section A, you can see, no further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, that fails. All right, so we've got the first and second parts we passed with amendments, and the third part we passed with amendments, section D. So, the next item on the agenda is new business and, let's see that, Dominion Tree Protection Agreement breached. So I would like you that we go into executive session to get a board of directors on the situation, the Dominion's Tree Protection Agreement breached, so discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. That passes.
I told you, you can do that. Congratulations, that's impressive.